Do we have form? Not sure if you guys can hear me. Mr. Fucia, can you hear me? Thumbs up. Perfect. Madam Recording Secretary, I don't think we have a good connection. Can you hear? Uh, Mr. Linda or Ashley, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Perfect. I think we're still have connection with the. Mary, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Perfect. And then.
I can hear you as well.
Perfect. You're just having trouble connecting with the council. No worries. I think you were muted. I'm gonna go ahead and begin the meeting. Are we good to go?
Yes.
Awesome. This is the regular meeting of the Community Development Commission. Today is Wednesday, March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two. Seeing a quorum, this means officially called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Can you please lead it, Mr. Comingon? Comington?
Getting better for the group. Please salute all others. Place your right hand over your heart.
If you wanna use the microphone, otherwise.
I'll repeat what I just said. Please stand. All veterans, you may salute. Everyone else, place your right hand on your heart. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Comington for that. Madam Recording Secretary, can you please take roll call?
Roya Fucia?
Here.
Winston Hamilton?
There.
Ben Stracher? Dan Lee? Yolanda Martinez?
Present.
Richard Santana?
Present.
Jennifer Oliver? Robert Harvey?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Um, Chair Oliva is running a little bit behind. As soon as she gets in, I'll let her rejoin the meeting. Um, at this time, we're move to public comments. Uh, this is the time where members of the public may address the Community Development Commission regarding any non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the committee. No actions may be taken on non-agenda items unless authorized by law. Does the public have any comments they wish to share? With the commission, please know you have three minutes to speak. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone wishing to speak before the commission?
Not at the council chamber. Um, the members, um, yes, do you want to speak or?
If you can raise your hand if you wish to speak, that way our recording secretary can call upon you. Does anyone on the online platform would wish to speak to the commission? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comments and move on to the consent calendar. This is time for the commission to consider matters under consent calendar. Items include number one. Do we have a motion to consider item one?
Let's move it.
See, commission come in. Do I have a second? Thank you. Thank, second by Shadang. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay.
Aye.
Thank you. Um. Item is proven amnesty. Under the consent calendar, will we now be moving on to the business calendar? Uh, the first item on the business calendar is item number two, to appoint a representative to the Historic Resource Commission for the remainder of twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-two term. Will staff please report on this matter?
Uh, we don't have, um, major reporting, but uh, we need to appoint someone for the Historic Resources Committee, um, for the executive director from the planning building. He should put things to appoint someone new.
Before we continue, it looks like we lost Arlinda. Does that mean we lose Quorum? Do we break?
No, we're still okay.
I see chair, okay. Oh, there, chair. Let me let you resume where we left off. We're under the business calendar. On item number two, I'll give you a minute to get situated. Um, I'll let you pick up from there. We simply were asking if staff were reporting this matter, and I'll let you take over once you're ready. And I'll go ahead and pause here. Whenever you're ready, Miss Oliva.
Okay, we will now consider matters under business calendar. The first item on the business calendar is item number two, appoint a representative to the Historic Resources Commission for the remainder of twenty-one through twenty-three. Will staff report on this matter? As I was saying, uh, the executive director for the planning building, uh, agency requested that we appoint someone new for the Historic Resources Commission. Um, so we open the floor, um, for any volunteers. Or if you have any questions regarding the meeting, I can give you a little information that I have. Additional information would be great. Uh, the meeting takes place every other month, starting with January, March, and so on and so on, on the first Thursday of every other month, and the meeting at four thirty. Can I have a volunteer?
You can mic up and respond to reading.
That is pretty similar to this. It's a commission, um, and you will just attend the meetings. And then they go over any items that are.
For a quick question.
Every other month. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, Madam Chair, I was wondering if you can ask city staff, what exactly does this historic commission oversee, where the responsibilities? Uh, that way, I know we have some folks who may have more time than others. If staff can please report on, you know, the type of responsibilities and time can, um, commitment. Whoever decides to, to throw themselves in the ring, what to expect from, uh, sitting on the historic commission. Does it need to be knowledge of the history of the city? Is it code enforcement stuff? I mean, just if you give us a quick broad example, Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Uh, sorry, Brian, do you? Uh, generally, the Historic Resources Commission oversees, uh, the designation of properties onto the historic registry for the city. Uh, also, there can be some other, uh, projects that can be brought to the Historic Resources Commission, but approval. Uh, if a, uh, an owner of a historic property, uh, wants to do any kind of remodeling or, um, possibly they, if they need to tear that property down, it has to go to the Historic Resource Commission. Uh, it's laid out in the San Antonio Municipal Code, I believe it's chapter thirty-three, but please don't bother me on that. But there's a whole chapter in the Municipal Code that lays out responsibilities of the Historic Resources Commission. Uh, in terms of their meetings, I believe that they, uh, right now meet quarterly, but those can be increased to monthly. And what you will find is that they do have more special meetings than other commissions, especially towards the end of the year. Uh, because if a property owner applies to be listed on the registry, um, the, that needs to go to the commission. And the city receives a lot of those applications towards the end of the year and tries to process those before the conclusion of the year. Because it does have, um, impacts on property taxes.
Thank you for the information. That was my question.
Thank you for the information. Well, that's the very same question that I had pending. Does the commission have any other additional questions to say?
I don't have a question, but I, it's just.
To volunteer?
I don't, I mean, I'm going with the Indian, but I don't know. I, I want to.
Okay, Commissioner, would anything else interested in proof of you?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Do you mind if you, Commissioners, please speak to the mic. We are having a really bad, uh, we can't really hear from the, this platform. So if you please turn your mic, speak directly to the mic, help us hear what, uh, Commissioner Dang Lee said.
I would like to watch it from the position. It's only result.
Do we have a motion to approve item number two, appoint a representative to the Historic Resources Commission for the remainder of twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-two term?
Let's move it.
Do I listen in? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
My other question, uh, three, five, yes, confirm. We have two public hearing items. Item number three, approve the housing authority annual plan. And item number four, fiscal year twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-three, animal action plan and budgets for the community development block grant. Home investment partnerships grant, emergency collections grant, and authorized submission to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time and place of co-chairing of the Community Development Commission of the City of San Antonio. First item, approve the housing authority annual plan. Will staff report on the matter?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and for the record, the, um, public hearing is actually for item number four. And so then this, uh, they want to clarify that this is not a public hearing for the people of the House of Authority Annual Plan.
Okay, so.
Okay, great. It's true. So, uh, with the, uh, with our rapid action, could you people of our House of Authority Annual Plan, it's my privilege to introduce three and lots of senior House of Representatives.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm a little bit nervous to be up here, so I'm just gonna say it out first, please. My name is Navaria Hudson, and I have the privilege to serve as a senior housing specialist with the Santa Ana Housing Authority. And I'm here to present to you the housing authority annual plan, uh, for, for approval for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. So the annual plan is a yearly document that the housing authorities, public housing authorities have to submit to HUD. Uh, housing, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, uh, for our activities and to communicate to, to them as well as the public. What our progress is and what our goals are for the next year. So as you see with the screen, um, in your packet as well. The city's allocation for calendar year twenty-twenty-one funding, uh, is as noted, the housing source voucher and the BASH program is at thirty-five million, nine hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven. Fostered to independence, uh, we're at two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-two. Uh, for the mainstream voucher program, uh, one million, nine hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and fifteen, and non-agenda group, the staple, uh, is two million, one hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety. And the emergency housing vouchers, uh, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and five. So what these figures represent is the amount of funding that the City of Santana Housing Authority receive to serve those different populations in our community. So we have, uh, funding available to serve, um, the population at large, BASH, which are veterans, foster youth, uh, for those, um. Young adults that are leaving the foster care program, the mainstream voucher program, such kind of homeless, disabled individuals, uh, not yet elderly, which HUD considers elderly, sixty-two years of age and older. And then, most recently, the emergency housing voucher, which assists, uh, homeless, currently homeless individuals in our community that are either at risk or are homeless currently. And these funds are allocated on an annual basis, uh, through the housing authorities annual plan. In order for the housing authority to receive feedback from our community, we do ask for our active participants to participate in a resident advisory board meeting. Uh, we conducted that resident advisory board meeting, um, in February, and we did conduct those in three different languages, English, Spanish, Vietnamese. Uh, it was done virtually, so we sent out an invitation to our active participants, uh, for them to join us. And they, there is a flyer included in the, um, staff report for your, for your viewing. And we have active participants participate in the meeting. Uh, we have feedback from, from the, uh, active participants, and we incorporated that feedback into the annual plan. We also published a notice, um, in the newspapers advising the community of our request for feedback from, or request of viewing of the documents for our annual plan. Um, then we have, the, the goals and objectives that we described in our annual plan have a larger platform, which is a five-year plan. The five-year plan is, is a five-year, um, document that we, the housing authority also provides to HUD, which describes, it communicates to HUD what our goals and objectives are. For the next five years, which are long range goals. Uh, and in our annual plan, which is what I'm presenting to you today, uh, is our, we, our yearly objectives will be home to accomplish with the funding we receive from HUD. In the upcoming year, which is twenty-twenty-one, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. Uh, and our goals and objectives are listed for you in the presentation. Uh, so our goal is to continually utilize the funding that we receive from HUD. Uh, we would like to utilize all the funding we receive to assist low, to moderately low or low-income families in our community with assistance for housing assistance. We also would like to expand our family self-sufficiency program. In this program, assist current families, active families on our housing program. To accomplish certain goals and objectives, to hopefully attain self-sufficiency from the assistance that we provide them. Uh, we also would like to ensure that we provide accurate, um, reporting to HUD with the, with the processes of our program. That we complete our, our files accurately to be sure that we are charging the families the right that they should be paying and reporting that out to HUD. Uh, we are working towards increasing assisted housing, uh, opportunities and providing, uh, quality customer service to our existing landlords. And conducting outreach to our new landlords as well, so we can communicate to them that we exist in our, in this community. And we would like to partner with them to assist, uh, low-income families in providing a decent, safe and sanitary housing. Provide, uh, financial, provide equal opportunity and affirmative, further fair housing. Um, stating that, uh, the housing authority staff participates in a yearly fair housing training, uh, to also inform us of any changes in the law. So we are, are better equipped to provide those services and guidance to our tenants and our landlords as well. Uh, we also promote the, or advise our families, or, uh, the VAWA. Uh, the VAWA program, which is applicable to our applicants, our participants, and our landlords, if there's any individual experience in any type of, uh. Violence against themselves, stalking violence, dating violence, uh, there'll be advice that they do have rights and that they are protected and they could, uh, we could assist them in that process, if that were to come to our attention. Uh, and then, uh, finally, the last few pages here, uh, utilize, uh, all of the funding provided by HUD and apply for additional funding. So HUD, as a recent, a few years past, we have, has, uh, offered opportunities for housing authorities to apply for specific types of housing opportunities. So that's what, uh, this goal is referring to, that the housing authority would seek out any available opportunities to assist a specific, uh, population in our community. Um, and this is expanding further upon our family self-sufficiency program and how we communicate to our families, our active participants in our community, that we have this program available to them. There is a monthly, uh, email that goes out newsletter to our participants advising them of the program. And the resources available to assist with economic self-sufficiency, uh, from, from the services that they receive with the agency. And, um, again, this is a, a review of the previous scores stated with regard to the accuracy of our program. It provides you with, uh, concrete numbers in terms of what our goals and what, uh, progress we have had in the accomplishments that we have received. Uh, in the last, uh, fiscal year of twenty-twenty-one, uh, where the, uh, housing authority, we audited two hundred and seventy-three files. CMAP is, uh, is, if you will, the grading, um, tool that HUD uses to grade how the housing authority performs accurately. With, uh, processing of files, which is section eight management assessment. It's similar to that. Um, so this, uh, CMAP is the indicator, the tool that we use to, to grade ourselves and recommend and we provide those results to HUD. Um, increase assisted housing choices by providing quality customer service. Once again, we, uh, the way we do that with our families is we, um, send out a newsletter on a monthly basis. Advising them, uh, any new changes or any, um, new notices that we must provide to the San Ana Housing Authority community of any changes that occur. And we also, uh, advise landlords how they can list their units, uh, to be able to reach to our, um, to our participants in the program. Uh, uh, how we provide equal opportunity and affirmative, further in the fair housing is by, uh, participating in the fair housing training. Uh, for all housing division employees, and our last training was conducted on August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, and then annually is conducted approximately around the same time. Uh, and then, uh, VAWA, the, we provide the, the documentation regarding VAWA protection to our applicants, participants, and landlords equally. Uh, so the deadline for the submission of the fiscal year twenty-two, three, twenty, twenty-three, excuse me, twenty-twenty-three annual plan is no later than April fifteenth, which is seventy-five days before the end of the fiscal year. Uh, so at the next council meeting, April fifth, or at the April fifth council meeting, this document will be presented for approval. Thank you. I appreciate your patience. Does anyone have any questions for me? I'm just gonna move it up.
Quick question there. Uh, on page two of the initial presentation, which one of these was one that was dedicated to assisting veterans?
BASH. B-A-S-H.
And hope that a lot, how much of that actually does go towards veterans support round?
Uh, well, that we partner with our community, um, referral agency. So the veterans that are referred to us by them, those are the veterans that we assist. So I would say a hundred percent of the veterans that we receive from that agency we serve. I might say, for whatever reason, decide to withdraw and not proceed with the application, but in terms of actual dollar amounts, I don't have that dollar figure on the top of my head.
Yeah, uh, but in your sponsored question, a hundred percent of the funds for our BASH program are in homeless entries. Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question in regards to the resident and minority board. Um, how many active participants are there? And how many, um, how many participants were a part of the ad hoc, um, meeting that were held on veterans?
So our active participants on the program, we have, uh, three thousand twenty-six. Um, and for our participation, uh, it looks like, I think, I believe it was not, um, as many as we would like to have present. Uh, but for the English one, it looks like we had about four participants. Uh, for the Vietnamese, um. I think, uh, Vietnamese was, was, uh, I think, one or two, if you, oh, we didn't have any, sorry, we didn't have any Vietnamese participation, and for Spanish, we had one.
Question, was there a reason, uh, there wasn't that, you know, probably the need was, was it no one's, or like, do you have any bodies that so interested on?
Uh, we sent it, uh, we sent the invitation out to our active participants, um, and they, for whatever reason, if they are able to log in, we assume. We do offer them the opportunity to come in and, and be present for the resident advisory board meeting. However, usually our Vietnamese attendance is our highest numbers, and for some reason this year, maybe where it added in the calendar, it just depends on what availability was.
Well, yeah, what's like connected with the media from the new community to get work out?
We don't, uh, target it in that manner because it's only for active participants on the program. So, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
However, we did, we did, uh, publish a public notice and required that, uh, for the annual plan.
I'm sure I have a couple of questions if you don't mind. Thank you. And so my question is, uh, can you talk a little bit more about the resident advisory board?
Uh, in, in, in what context or what terms or specifically?
Does, does that, does that oversee, um, the applications that go in?
So the resident advisory board is for our existing participants, the laywood, the families that are currently existing on the program. We do host this meeting on an annual basis to receive feedback from our participating families. So, uh, it's obviously done, you know, in the early part of the year, but, you know, it would not be advertised.
So these are residents who have the voucher program, be part of this board, correct?
Correct.
Awesome. And then what was the outcome of their, their surveys?
Uh, you would see in the staff report, we included the comments that we provided to us. Uh, so exhibit one, uh, towards the back of the, the end of the, uh, staff report. You will see the, the comments from the, from our residents and what their, uh, their answers to the, the questions that we provided to them.
Right, but I'm, what I'm asking is, what, what is, how many outcome applicants have we got? How many surveys have been completed?
Uh, well, when we do the group meeting, it's a, uh, group, uh, interaction. So we ask the questions and we ask the group how they would like to respond. If the individual didn't feel comfortable doing the response in a group setting, then they can provide a response, um, at the end of the meeting. And so what you see here as the exhibit are the responses to these. And the summary of the meeting that we had, like that.
Okay. And then, uh, I think this question is, um, what is the annual allocation for ESG for homelessness in particular?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. That's actually the next item on the agenda. Uh, it's not part of this, it's our emergency.
Great. Thank you. All for now. Thank you.
Been reading some of these notes from the survey. There's a statement here that they had to wait for over seven years. Always established priority to be, and how does somebody wait seven years?
Uh, so the, generally, uh, it's the waiting time for housing assistance is seven years. And that's solely dependent on the amount of funding that we receive from HUD to assist families. So we open our waiting list, uh, and invite residents to apply, uh, for the opportunity. And when we have funding available to assist those families have a waiting list, we begin calling their name from, from that list to assist them. And it generally takes about seven years in order for us to assist them because of the funding we receive from HUD, from the housing authority.
So in essence, they just have to wait their turn and work their way up the stack. So there is no, I'm not sure if there is any standards of priority. Okay, that may bump somebody up that has a more urgent need. You know, they all have a need, but is there any standards you look at versus, or it's just, or it's covered, so?
That is a really good question. So that, the standard for applying for a regular waiting list, their, their only requirement is to live or work in the city of Santana. For our BASH vouchers, they just come right to the top of the list because we get the referrals from the, uh, for our community, part of the VA. And so they don't, there is no waiting for them. It's just a matter of them finding that resource and being connected to the housing authority. Uh, we do have a preference on our regular waiting list for veterans. So if we do have a veteran that, like, they would, they, they would rise to the top of the list.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Oh, so I'm not too familiar with the requirements of, of the vouchers. I know that with regular affordable housing, we can't just, you know, kick people out, you know, because they make. A higher possible income. Is that the case with the vouchers as well? Like, once you guys continue to get it? Or are people typically transitioned out of the program once they get a certain income?
So, yes, they, to be eligible to receive the voucher, they have to be within the thirty to fifty percent of the median income depending on the housing. Opportunity that they're applying for. But they will remain on the program as long as the Housing Authority supports their market rep. So if they reach the point where they're making enough income, where they're paying a hundred percent of the money, that's the point that the housing will essentially end. But there is a grace period of six months if they're at, where they're being a hundred percent of the rent for six months, then the housing would already under 70%.
Thank you. And just a follow-up question on that. So I assume this is like monitored annually? And then as the, the income increases, the Housing Authority decreases the amount of help us are able to pay more for the program, right?
Yes, that is correct. And family certified on an annual basis that they continue to meet that requirement for the program.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. So what would be the ratio for this voucher? How, how, how many are, you know, the, you know, that giving voucher, okay, nonprofit? How many of them are just individual voluntary to apply to that? What's the ratio of like approval for voucher?
Let me see if I understand your question. So you would like to know how many vouchers we issue to families?
Well, I mean, what I'm getting is that it seems like you're working with a nonprofit too, a giving voucher. So what are the ratio of non-profit that you have actions we don't know, compared to the individually applied?
Got it. So generally, the, the service providers and nonprofits that we work for are, are referring to us. For the mainstream voucher program, for the emergency housing voucher program. So those would be the voucher programs that we would partner with agencies. So the majority of the funding is for our regular housing insurance voucher. And that's the waiting list. So they would apply in, in without a waiting list to receive services.
Any additional questions? Do we have a motion to approve item three, approve the Housing Authority annual plan?
Let's move it.
Does it? All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Better for everybody to understand. Again, I am fiscal year twenty twenty-two, through twenty twenty-three, annual action plan and budgets for the community development grant. Home investment partnerships grant and emergency solutions grant and other our submission to the nine states department for the public and government. What's that report on here?
Yes, thank you, Jennifer. And with this, you will want to open up the public hearing.
Ladies and gentlemen, built in the time and place for the public hearing of the community development condition of the city of San Antonio. Now, I'm not too sure.
Yeah.
Okay, here we go.
And I'd like, Mr. David Flores, I've seen your community development analysis, provide our presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. Nice to see all of you again. So once again, my name is David Flores, senior community development analyst. I'm due presentation on the annual action plan fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. So let me start off by talking a little bit about the consolidated plan overview. So every five years, the city must submit to HUD five-year consolidated, consolidated plan, which outlines. The planning of some funds for eligible projects and programs. And this is pretty much the plan itself. So it's a pretty big document. But it is a five-year consolidated plan. The, the city must also submit an annual action plan. Each year during the five-year consolidated plan cycle, outlining projects and programs cited in the five-year plan. And that's, but that's what's being presented to you today. In May of twenty twenty, the five-year consolidated plan was turned into HUD and it was approved. And the period of the consolidated plan covers January first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And every year for our program starts July first and it ends on June third. During the development of the consolidated plan, we were able to staff the six priority needs that you can see on the left-hand side of the slide. I won't read them all, because I'm sure all of you can read them, but just cover a couple. The first one extends supply of affordable housing and we created a sociological to that need. Also access to inadequate supply of public services. So because that was a priority need for the city, we're going to allocate some of our funds to public services. And I'm sure you're familiar with this process. We just finished with the approval recommendation for our public service programs. Next slide, please. So this next slide just shows the process flowchart so that you can understand this process a little bit better. So we have the consolidated plan, which is the five-year plan, the big document. And within that consolidated plan, we have to create a yearly annual action plan or AAP. And, and then at the end of every year, June thirtieth of that year, we have to create our report card, very similar to what Housing Authority does with the CMAP. But we call ours the CAEP. So, and, and that report card is just a measurement tool to ensure that we're meeting the goals that we're outlining our annual action. The annual action plan, as you know, we receive annual grants from HUD to develop affordable housing. We can allocate funds for street improvements, sidewalk improvement. We can allocate park money to our parks department to either create a new park or to rehabilitate existing parks. For public facility improvements, we can create economic development programs to assist our local businesses here in Santa Ana. We can fund, we can partly fund code enforcement to do inspections in CPG eligible areas in our community. For public service programs and for the delivery of services for individuals experiencing homelessness. So the city is expecting to receive. The allocation for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three as follows. For the community development grant, we receive five point six million for the home investment partnership program, one point seven. And the emergency solutions grant, or ESG, a little bit under five hundred thousand. So we say, the slide says, we expect to receive that because we haven't received our award letter from HUD. So once that award letter is received, we will definitely modify those amounts, not in our action plan and our staff report that's been mailed to council and keeper. So in order for us to move forward with our annual action plan, consolidated plan and our CAEP or report card, we always have to have community engagement. So we do this in several ways. The first one is we have public hearings, like the one that we're having here today. And so we invite the public, we let them know that we are having a public hearing regarding the annual action plan. That gives us the opportunity to come in and give us comments, your recommendations on what we can do better with our city and with our funds. And then the second public hearing that we're going to have is with our, our city council, which will go to their meeting on April nineteenth, which is next month. In addition to these two public hearings, we make our annual action plan available to the public for review and comment for a period of thirty days. And the way that we notify the public of this is we put advertising in three newspapers. So on March tenth, twenty twenty-two, we advertise the public hearings and the availability of our annual action plan. On the Orange County Register, which is an English newspaper, La Vigna in Spanish, and our Vietnamese newspaper. This meets a requirement for our citizen participation plan. This is a legal process that we have to adhere to. So we're, so far, we've been complying and we intend to continue to comply with this. So for twenty twenty-two CPG program budget, as you know, we can do a variety of services. On the table there, you can see the general activities and the funding amounts are allocated to each activity. I won't go through every single one of them, but you can see we have money allocated to administration, affair housing, public service programs. We have a housing activity which involves a single-family resident rehabilitation program. And the deltaing assistance for residents that want to purchase a home here in Santa Ana, we can assist them with that as well. And the one that you're mostly familiar with is the nonprofit service funds, right? We just finished with. So for economic development, we allocate funds for that program. We provide small businesses with five thousand dollar grants or up to five thousand dollars to help these businesses retain employees. And to be sustainable. And we do this through our economic development department. With infrastructure improvement, with CPG funds, we are intending to fund the police athletic and activity this year or the PEL program. They're currently in a building that's very, very old. I think it was built in nineteen fifty. And the restrooms are outdated, they're evaporated, evaporated, they're falling apart. So what we want to do is invest the money in those restrooms to make them ADA accessible to all of the residents using that facility. I talked about CPG funds being allocated for parks or new parks, and this is a perfect example. There's a park located in the corner of Break Street and Myrtle. This is the design concept for the park and it's under construction at this time. It's going to have a skate park and exercise area, top lot, and it's going to have that pathway for the residents to walk against exercise. So we're very proud of this park that's being, currently being built. With our housing programs, I talked about the single-family rehab, we're contracting now, we'd have workforce humanity to acquire this program. Because we, we're not even going to do it here at the city on our own. We don't have the capacity. So they're actually doing an amazing job with this program. We currently have twenty, twenty-four applications. And six active rehabilitation projects right now. And all the residents that qualify for this program have to be low income. So it's working out very, very well. Code enforcement, we fund them with some CPG funds to go out to CPG eligible communities to do inspections, to make sure that our community doesn't have any. Safety or health and safety issues. As you can see on the right-hand side, there was a structure that was uncommitted. And when a structure is uncommitted, it probably isn't a safe and structure. So they go out there, they tag that and ask the, the residents to tear it down or to get the appropriate permits. So that it is a safe structure for everybody living there. This is one of the ways that we preserve our current housing style, right? And provide a livable environment for our residents. Public service programs, I'm sure that you could probably recognize some of the names of our nonprofit organizations in this picture. So we currently funding and continue funding Girls' Hee, the Boys and Girls' Club. Right in the middle, we have OCTAC that provides services in the Willer neighborhood. And we have America on Track, Mutual Ground, who does a summer night lights program in Hills South Door Park. It's doing a gang intervention program. And the last one in the park there is Moms of the Old, she provides services to pregnant, pregnant moms and their families. For twenty twenty-two home program budget. The home program provides funds for wide range of housing related activities, including building, acquisition of land for buildings. And a rehabilitation of portable houses for rental homeownership. You have a budget there, the general activities, we fund administration. We also set aside fifty percent for Home Choro, set aside. And that is an organism, a nonprofit organization, a community housing development organization that has been certified by the city to provide housing development programs. And we do affordable housing and development and rehabilitation programs. So our total budget for that is one point seven. So these are two current development projects that are in the works right now. We're trying to work very hard to get these up and running. So the first one is the Westview House with the Westview House. The developer is the community development partners and they're proposing to construct an eight-five unit multifamily apartment project. And as you can see the design, it's a beautiful building. So hopefully once we go through the approval process, we can hit the ground running. Maybe by the end of the year, we hope. And the next one is Crossroads at Washington. And that's right in the corner of Santa Ana Boulevard and Washington Avenue, right into the, by freeway. So they're proposed, the developers are proposing to build eighty-six units of portable residential community with approximately a thousand square foot commercial area. So it's a mixed use. With the ESG program. ESG provides funds to assist sheltered and shelter homeless individuals, as well as those that risk homeless to quickly regain stability and prevent housing after experiencing housing crisis or homelessness. So you can see the, our budget there. Once again, administration is always needed to run these programs. House homeless outreach, we fund the police department through the HART program to provide housing services to our communities. Homeless emergency shelters, homeless prevention programs, rapid rehousing. And we are contracting now with two-one-one to assist us with data collection and management so we can report to, of our outcomes at the end of the year. And to answer a question that was previously asked for the CPG application, there was a collaborative between five cities. Yeah, five cities, the city of Orange, Santa Ana, Anaheim, Irvine, and Garden Grove, who released an application for ESG funds. Several nonprofits were selected for the ESG and they were awarded contracts for a five-year period. So your exhibit four, you have the, the names of all the nonprofits that are being funded this year or that are proposed to be funded this year through the ESG program. And that's exhibit four. So the HART program stands for Homeless Evaluation Assessment and Response Team, focused exclusively on homeless. Individuals and families and addresses problems, its entirety by addressing a need and local needs. We'll fund the homeless, sheltered mercy house, and wife's place, who give services to victims of domestic violence. So the next step for us, the deadline for submission of the annual action plan is May fifteenth. So that's forty-five days before the end of the fiscal year. So next process is to go to council, have them review it. And if they approve it, we will submit it hopefully on time. And our next meeting with council will be on April nineteenth. That's it for my presentation. Do you have any questions? Like I answered everything?
My question, my question for community leaders. Is, is current news the only option for community outreach to get feedback? And second question, since, since this public notice has gone out, has anybody contacted? Contacted the, did any feedback?
So we haven't had any feedback yet from the posting of our annual action plan at the library, sixth floor, community government AC and our perfect cap. City manager's office. So there hasn't been any comments submitted as of yet, as of this afternoon. And by law, we are required to advertise to the newspapers. And those are the three newspapers that we are required to advertise. But that's, it doesn't limit us from doing that. So in addition to that, which I didn't include, every time we have an annual action plan, consolidated plan or CAEP. We always send the information to all of our nonprofits so that they can notify their, of their, their clients that are currently serving as well as their staff. So everybody has the ability. Their clients that are currently serving as well as their staff. So everybody has the ability to participate.
Yeah, I've got three questions. It's happened in Kiper score. I guess when I'm looking at twenty twenty-one, what was that score?
So that caper is going to come to you pretty soon because we're still in the current year. So we haven't closed down any activities. But around August or September, we will come back to this body and present the capers so that you can review and you can.
That started July one of twenty twenty to. No, then to twenty-one, what?
So the caper that's going to be brought to you, August or September is from July first of twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two.
Right. So what was our first Kiper score?
And so I don't have that information, but so far we're on target. Yeah, so so far we're on target to meet our goals for all of our three funded programs.
And building on that, there's, there's not a score. We don't receive like a ninety percent out of a hundred. It's values and results and progress across all the programs in terms of the outputs that we're achieving as we're progressing. In, in fulfilling our goals and objectives of our annual action plan and our conservative plan.
So would you say to say that we're on track for maybe eighty percent of what we're talking about, ninety percent is history group?
Right now, we're about forty-five percent, but it just kind of varies from each program and activity. So I'll give you an example. We, we stated that we were going to complete. That we were going to provide two hundred grants to our small businesses through the economic development program. And I believe right now we're at fifty percent of doing that. So that tells me that we're on target to meeting our goal by the end of five-year consulting factor.
Okay, that's, that's one down. Code enforcement is, since I'm a neighborhood guy, I was on the board of company. And the chairman for a couple of years way back in the day. We used to have code enforcement, residential code enforcement officers assigned for neighborhoods. We used to get monthly reports. I haven't seen that, haven't heard anything about that in years. You talk about funding code enforcement. Where do we stand here as of almost April twenty twenty-two, the residential code enforcement?
Yep, that's a good question. I don't know the answer to that, but I can definitely ask the code enforcement manager to give you support feedback and the information bring to you in our next meeting.
Okay, were you on staff back in the day when you used to have assigned residential code enforcement offices?
I don't recall that. No, I've been in the city for about seventeen years now, but I don't recall that program.
Bruce Dunham, I think he was in that position as the head guy at that time, but I don't think he retired for a long time. But I would like to hear that because as the chairman of my area, I get those kind of questions all the time. I'd love to have a solid answer. Last question is just an easy one. I like the pictures that I saw of some of the new developments, the crossroads, I don't exactly where that is. I don't know where Westview House.
Sure, I can tell you that. So Westview House is located. Sorry, you said Westview or Crossroads?
No, Westview.
Westview, so Westview twenty-five thirty-four West Westminster Avenue.
The crossroads would be by Irving or Harrow or Westminster and. Irving. Irving, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, man chair. Thank you, Zach, for the presentation. Just a couple of questions. One is, I go back to the E S G funding for homelessness and facilities. Looks like we're funding four hundred eighty-nine thousand one forty-one. Can you, can you tell me a little more about this? I feel like sometimes it's a little vague and we don't really get into the homeless. It's a big crisis in our city, but we really don't report out too much. And I know that there's funding coming from different, from, from this commission. Can you elaborate, expand a little bit more on that?
Sure, sorry, I didn't understand your question very well.
So we're saying aside for, I believe it's a, we're saying aside four ninety-nine thousand for homeless outreach, is that correct?
Correct. Or where for outreach services, fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand. And then I believe we have administration costs at thirty-six thousand. Who is that being paid to? Is that two-one-one or is that city?
So the administration is for staff costs, paid to administer the program. The homeless street outreach, part of that goes to the San Ana P D through the H R program. And the other one is to. On exhibit four, you have the breakdown there. So the street outreach, actually it all goes to San Ana P D.
And is that for part-time, full-time officers is the coal team, that's where it gets a little, for me, a little confusing.
Sure, not for the coal team, but for the hard team, and it is for full-time officers.
And what, what's the capacity of a hard officer?
So their, their roles and responsibilities consist of going out to the community and engaging the homeless population. To ensure that we assist them with any homeless services that they need and to get them off the streets, whether children or mom.
And, and what's the difference between the coal team? Is that more of a cleanup kind of thing or?
Yeah, that's correct.
Correct. So, okay.
Provides more social services in the coal team, more cleanup.
And then the second question I had was. The five street improvement projects, not the projects, but I believe it's page one hundred. And it talks about street improvements. Can you tell me what those street improvements are?
Sure. So we are proposing to do street improvements in our younger neighborhood. Most of those streets are, they have several loopholes, they have several cracks that cause accidents. And in that neighborhood, there's a lot of traffic, so they were worn down. So we're going to invest money into that neighborhood. We're also doing sidewalk improvements throughout the civic center. There's a lot of people that come in and sort purposes that are at the ADA accessible sidewalks. So we're going to take care of that. And certain C D B T eligible neighborhoods, we're going to provide safety crossing beacons. So there's beacons that are on the corner that kind of do rapid flashing to make sure that the drivers know that there's pedestrian waiting across the street.
Great, thanks. And one last question is, does the commission have? Can, so I know that there is money that, that they would like to be earmarked for code enforcement. Would there be any restrictions on those funds that we can stipulate?
Not that I know of. I, I know that the stipulation for providing funds to code enforcement is that they have to do activities. C D B T eligible neighborhoods only. And if they're doing inspections in that neighborhood, we also have to make sure that we make available home rehab program. So if the violation is issued, the home.
Why, I have a question, Mr. Flores, because I think you're going to answer it, is, I mean, is this going to hire more officers or is this just going straight for enforcement?
No, this is for our current code enforcement officers. And I want to point out too, that all of the C D B T funds are not allocated to staff a hundred percent. Okay, there's other funding streams that come in that make up their, their full salary.
The reason why is I, I caution towards funding too much code enforcement because we use code enforcement a lot during the pandemic. When it comes for the rental relief program, the onsite testing. We used them recently for the census when we had convinced neighborhoods to participate in this bicentennial count because it's important. So I hope we don't use this money to like go out and really attack homeowners. And I understand that there are structural things that may not be up to code, but I hope that this, this money is be used to, to, you know. Not so much of a crackdown, break, you know, enforcement and penalties and fines. It's just more of an education and more of a, a different kind of approach.
Yes, I agree with you. And those are the discussions that we have with code enforcement officers and the manager of code enforcement. Their, their role is not to go out there and punish our residents or to be committed, it's more to help them to create a safe and healthy environment. So that everybody can live there.
Right. When you show that slide of that, that attachment or that, you know, that's a clear example of, you know, what not, but. I'm hoping we don't use, you know, again, going out there and like really harassing residents, stuff like that. That's the only thing I, I hope for. But I understand their responsibilities, duties that they, they are assigned and tasked to.
I can assure you that C D B T funds are not used for that.
Great, thank you. That, that's it. Back to you, manager.
For the E S G program budget, I see that there is an amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand dollars for E S G beyond collection management?
Yes.
What exactly does that entail?
So all the public services that are being funded with the E S G, they have to report all of their outcomes to two-one-one. Okay, and then two-one-one collects all that information and they provide a report that is delivered to them at the end of the year. So it's just a lot of data collection from all of the different nonprofits providing homeless services.
Okay. And it's not only concerned that we're sending the biggest amount on data collection. And, you know, smaller amounts might get assistance to unhoused individuals. I guess that's just a comment. And for the C D B G program budget. For the housing, right, so I see the housing rehabilitation. But are any of these being used directly to develop housing? Because, you know, just finish our housing element and so we're going to need to be building affordable housing to meet reader needs and all of that. So is any of this money going to that or are we just using other funds for that?
That's a great question. Thank you. So with C D B T funds, we're not allowed to use those funds for developmental housing projects. We can rehabilitate them, but we can't develop them. And with C D B T also, we can purchase property, right, to develop, but we just can't C D B T funds to develop.
Any additional questions? So we have a motion to approve either number four fiscal year, question two, two, three, annual action plan and budgets for the community development law grant. Grant, home investment partnership grant and emergency solutions grant. And offer a commission to the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Move it.
So I have a second, just a second. All of the individuals say aye?
Aye.
Are. Matter of fact, I don't have any complaints. At this time, we would like to hear from the public. Being manual, Chris. Is there any written communication? No.
Uh, I will, I really, I'm sorry, man. Chair, are we in, in closing comments?
Okay.
I, I'm sorry, I can't hear that well, but good, I'm sorry.
No, does Zach have any, any comment they wish to share with the commission?
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple, couple thoughts here first. Thank you very much to David and Maria for their fantastic presentations today. And thank you for approval of our, our annual plan and our annual action plan. We are in the process of relaunching our emergency rental assistance program. Entering a final phase of the program and recertifying all the families that we've assisted so far. And also close the applications off to new applicants. So on March thirty-first. Similar to the state of California, we will be closing off new applications and now we're accepting new applications. Except for families who are imminent risk of eviction, who may still contact the city and we will still prevent those evictions. And then we are going to begin a, a very lengthy process over the next three to six months. Of recertifying all the families who've assisted so far to pay out their past due rent. And provide them with up to three months of prospective rental assistance. In total, a family will not be eligible for more than eighteen months of assistance. We are also in the process of. Of reviewing the proposals that we received through our R P for portable housing development. We received a total of five proposals. And we are currently still conducting a minimum threshold review of those proposals. And we can anticipate to bring those, our recommendations for awarding of portable housing funds. In the next three to four months. So that will be an ahead forthcoming initial here. Presentations by developers of the proposals and our recommendations for award of funds. With that.
Does the commission have any comments they wish to share?
If you don't mind, manager, I'd like to go first. Thank you. I wanted to first thank Maria and David for your presentation, walking us through this whole stuff. I understand it was a lot and you just made it really easy for us to understand. I would like to, just once again, ask city staff, if you guys would so call to invite us to upcoming events. I know there's been a couple we've missed. I know some of our commissioners have the flexibility and time to attend some meetings. I know that hopefully there's not a third wave of COVID, but for the time being, let's say, events are taking place in person. And just please keep us in mind for any of those opportunities because we would like to, to be out there. I think we missed the, the homeless count, the all, the county all point count. Then that's something that I, I'd love to, to have been partake of. So that being said, thank you for your time and thank you, man chair.
Actually, Commissioners and Nettie, I also wanted to thank staff. I go doing your homework and standing up here and speaking in public and the fire damage questions is always easy. Which you guys took in stride, that young lady, and when first I was nervous, you did great. So hopefully we'll see you again, give you more presentations. And then being that I have four kids and I know that there's at least five different school districts in the city of San Ana. And like entire twenty-six, twenty-seven square miles, that kids will have spring breaks at different times. And I always caution my neighbors, please be aware, please take extra care. Because we've got, I guess, until April seventeenth for Easter, but spring break is all over the place, these districts. So just stay aware with your neighbors, put a little notice there on the next yard, ask them to be careful and cautious. Hopefully all our kids get through it. And before we see each other again, happy Easter, everyone. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, I also wanted to thank staff for your work preparing these reports. I know these are like months of work on overall edge. And thank you for your excellent presentations and your patience answering all of our questions. Thank you for sharing these.
Well, when going upstate, I appreciate all your hard work and I can be up well, I see your effort, that trying to reach out to the business community as well. I, I appreciate that, no doubt, that work. That's a lot, thank you. I have good time that looking at David, turns him down.
So we have an additional comment?
Yeah, so I have taken the opportunity to thank Zach and a great presentation. It was one of the, sorry, I was a bit nervous, but it came out great. And I also wanted to shake the creation for how you, or like how you guys gave information to all the questions that should have affected the.
Any additional comments? I'd also like to thank Zach for all your work and this is just. Also in the words, so thank you so much. Go answer more questions. Just thank you. This meeting is officially adjourned. The next regularly is scheduled. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, April twenty-seventh at four thirty P M in the conference room. Thank you.